...
Good morning, everyone. Welcome again to City Hall. Welcome to Council Chambers and to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, October 15th, 2002. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. We invite you to join us and participate in council proceedings. For those of you unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live from home on your cable station, Channel 35. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Burnson, Galenter, Garcetti, Gruel, Hahn, Holden, Labange, Mysikowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley, Thomas, Weiss, Zine, Padilla, ten members present in the quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the items appearing on today's agenda, I would like to recognize Councilmember Mysikowski for our salute to the flag as well as a special presentation. Ms. Mysikowski.
Before I begin with the presentation, could I have everyone please rise for the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have the people here, I think in the first row, who are members of a very important family, come forward. Members, this is a resolution being presented posthumously to a man who had a great mark on our city, Don Cunningham. And I know he is someone who a few of us will remember, Tom Labange, Hal Burnson. Don Cunningham was a man who spent a lot of years in this city representing businesses and clients in real estate transactions in front of planning commissions in the City Council. But more than that, he also turned that skill, that expertise, into representing community people. Well, on the one hand, he was down here often at City Council lobbying and persuading people to look at certain aspects of a case. He, at the same time, was president of his local homeowners' association, the Brentwood Park Property Owners Association. And he brought that same skill group to representing his community. He was appointed on multiple occasions by then-Councilmember Marvin Rowdy to citizens' advisory committees, that came up with the Brentwood Pacific Palisades Plan, and one that was rather innovative in the city. It was one of the first, he was on the citizens' advisory committee, that helped initiate the first specific plan in a commercial business district in the city that wasn't just about development, but it was about community. And that's the San Vicente Boulevard specific plan. And I know an awful lot of commercial areas and representatives of commercial areas look at San Vicente and say, why can't we have more of our business communities look like that? Well, it looks like that because of people like Don Cunningham, business and residential people who came together and said that our business districts should be more than just business districts. They should be places where it's comfortable for pedestrians to go, where it's inviting, where you really create sense of community. And what we put forward, and through the help of Don Cunningham and many of the other citizens, on that specific plan was a model that we have replicated time and again in other areas of the city, maintaining that first-floor area for pedestrian and retail-serving uses that invite and cause participation. Before that existed, for instance, San Vicente did not have retail on its ground floor. It had banks and savings and loans. And at night, it closed up, and there wasn't a really comfortable place to walk. That is different today. And that, and many, many other instances, are as a consequence of the participation of Don Cunningham. Don's father, Stephen Cunningham, was a City Councilmember who represented the district that I now represent. And when Stephen Cunningham left the City Council, he then created Cunningham and Associates, a firm that was going and going forward to represent interests in and around City Hall. His son, Don Cunningham, took that up and again took that blending of representing businesses and community at the same time. And here, there's a third generation, some of whom are standing behind me, who are carrying on that tradition. So on behalf of the City Council, I want to present this resolution to Donald Cunningham, where we did adjourn the council in his memory, but today to pass it on to his family and those who are succeeding in the good works that he did for this city, many of them still living and participating and working in this city on that same behalf. So let me present this to the Donald Cunningham family on behalf of the many, many great works and contributions that Don Cunningham gave to this city.
(APPLAUSE). Does he say something? Mr. Speaker, it's Jeff.
Hi. I'm Jeff Cunningham, Don's youngest son. His eldest son is unfortunately stuck on the freeway and is crying into his cellphone right now. And my sister, Madeline, the three of us really appreciate the council taking this time and attention for my father. I had not planned to speak, so I'll be brief. But I will say that a couple of years ago, he told me, you know, you really ought to take over the family business. And I said, well, Dad, I'm kind of doing something else. And he said, well, let me, come here, son. You know, 20 years ago, you worked for me. Let me show you what it's all about. And as some of you may know, my cousin Fred is already involved with city planning issues. And what I do for a living and what the Stephen W. Cunningham company does now is manage medical office properties. And so what we do is work with other agencies within the different cities, largely Los Angeles, and also the hospitals, to try to bring appropriate development and facilities to the surrounding areas around those hospitals so that they can provide care and quality services to the people of the city of Los Angeles and the surrounding communities. I know my father would have been very thrilled to receive this award, as I am and the rest of our family. And we really want to thank the council, and particularly Cindy, for taking the time to set this up and honor his memory. Thank you.
Before you go, other councilmembers wish to add a few words. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members of council, to the Cunningham family, I worked with your father especially on the redevelopment of Raleigh Studios on Melrose and Van S. And this was at a time when Raleigh is the oldest studio and really independent studio in all Hollywood. And there was a lot of care given to how he perceived the neighborhood would react around that. And it's really, joined with Paramount's redevelopment, such a nice quality. So I want to let you know, though, when I'm at Stuck at the Light at Van S. and Melrose, I think of your father and the beautiful work he did in the redevelopment of Raleigh Studios and many things. It's very nice that you're here, and God bless his memory.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I think Cindy said most of what I would say, but I just want to add my congratulations in receiving this thing. I had the good fortune of working with your father for many years. And I can tell you that he was an advocate, but he was a very honest, straightforward individual. He never told you anything that wasn't absolutely correct. And he also wore the other hat of thinking what was correct for the communities and so forth. So that's something we don't see too often in that particular profession. But anyway, he was a credit to your family and also to what he did. So my congratulations.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Labange moves. Mr. Weiss seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Reyes moves. And Mr. Burnson seconds.
Before beginning the regular agenda, there are several items to continue. Item number 10, a request from Councilmember Mysikowski to continue that for one week to October 22nd.
Item number 10, members, request to continue for one week without objection.
Item number 14, a request by Councilmember Ryan to continue that item for two weeks to October 29th.
Item number 14, request to continue also without objection.
On the regular agenda, item number nine is a confirmation of Ms. Jerry Witt to the commission on the status of women. Personnel Committee has heard this item. A public hearing has been held in committee.
As Ms. Witt comes forward, thank you, Madam Clerk. Public hearing have been held in committee. We have the committee's report and recommendation before us. Members wishing to be heard on item number nine? Mr. Zine.
Morning, Mr. President, colleagues. Good morning, Jerry.
Good morning.
Remember, we interviewed you, it seems like yesterday, but I guess it was two weeks ago.
Right.
In committee. And I know your commitment to the city, I know your dedication and love for the city, and encourage all of my colleagues to support you in this endeavor, as I know you do extremely well for the city and all that you've done for the city over the years. And congratulations on being nominated by our mayor to this position, this commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on confirmation. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for serving the city. Forthwith on item number nine, please. Next item, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items noted for public hearing. Items one, two, and three are hearings on protests regarding street or alley vacations. I believe there is a card on number three.
There is a card on item number three. Let's call that special. On items one and two, I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. Members wishing to call items one or two special? Mr. Zine, did you wish to call an item special? Anyone wishing to call items one or two special? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items four through eight are also public hearing items. However, those have ordinances. I believe 12 councilmembers are expected. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
12 members are expected today, but for efficiency purposes, let's acknowledge that I have not received, I have not received requests from members of the public to address the council on items four through eight, so we shall deem the public hearings open and closed. We now have 12 members present and can vote on ordinances. Anybody wishing to call items four through eight special? Members, any specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items four through eight. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Next items, Mr. President, items for which public hearings have been held, items 11 through 25.
Items 11 through 25 now before us. 25 called special by Mr. Burnson. Members, let me remind us, 11 through 25, public hearings have been held. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Members, any specials? Mr. Zine?
President, at the request of Councilmember Holden, 21 to continue for one day.
Members request to continue item number 21 for one day. Is there any objection to that? Seeing none, item 21 is continued for one day. Item 25 has been called special by Mr. Burnson. Any other specials?
Mr. President, item number 22 does have two reports on the file, and the Arts, Health, and Humanities Report is submitted without recommendation. Do you wish to hold that on the desk for a special?
Is there a motion from the floor on item number 22? Seeing none, let's call that special. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, forthwith on item number 19.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 26 through 42.
26 through 42 now before us. I do have cards on items 33, item 40, and item, oh, we're not at 44 yet, so items 33 and 40, let's call those matters special.
And also, Mr. President, there are substitute motions that have been submitted on 34 LNM.
I believe those are special event and technical in nature, so we shall consider those matters as amended. Members, let me remind you that public hearings have not been held on these items. We shall consider these matters without objection. I do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on the balance of the items, so we shall deem the public hearing satisfied. Any other specials? Mr. Weiss.
I'd request a two-week continuance on item 27. We had previously requested a lengthier continuance than the agenda actually reflected, so let's ask for two weeks this time.
Members, request to continue item number 27 for two weeks. That would be October 29th. Seeing no objection, item 27 is continued. Any other specials? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, on the balance of the items, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Forthwith on item 26, please. Next item.
On the supplemental page, item number 44 is an item for which public hearing has not been held, and cards have been submitted on that matter.
Yes, let's call that matter special. Item 43 is a closed-session item. Let's hold that matter on the desk. Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. We have one of the great high schools of all of Southern California here, named after one of the greatest Americans, the greatest naturalist, John Muir. This is John Muir High from Pasadena. Please stand up. It's their business and educational magnet. They're down here with their teacher, Mr. Graves. And I have Natani Running Fox, who is the president of the senior class of Muir High School, home of Jackie Robinson and also John Vandykamp and a lot of other great people. Welcome, John Muir High School, Pasadena.
Welcome, students. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number three was called special in asmuch as there is a card from the public.
Yes, the council calls forward Michael Vigney at this time.
Yes, Michael Vigney, on behalf of the owner. I understand that there was a typographical error made on the description of the vacation that is going to be corrected today. And I just wanted clarification for the owner that since this is the final hearing of what's been a long, over-two-year process, that this final protest hearing, the clarification would be that once this correction has been made, what happens then? Does the ordinance then come back, and then that's the end of it? I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
Okay, thank you. And I believe we have a response for you. This closes the public hearing on this item. Chair recognizes Ms. Mysikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just the notice of the public hearing, and during the notice of the public hearing of the intent to vacate a piece of street, the notice was incorrectly written. But the map is correct. The ordinance that will present this and be adopted after the public hearing is closed is correct. And so the city attorney has indicated this can go forward, particularly since all parties. We've been working on this with the particular applicant involved, with the Brentwood Park Property Owners Association, and with the entire community. And they are all in support of this. So we can go ahead and, as we've had, open the hearing and then close the hearing, and then that will conclude the public participation in this, and the ordinance can go forward. So I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you for that clarification. Other members wishing to be heard on item number three? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 22 called special inasmuch as there are two reports on the file.
Mr. Pacheco on item 22?
No, Mr. President, I would like to call out of order item 44 and give some explanation. I understand the city attorney has a ruling on item number 44. Is she here? Are we going to wait? Should we wait for her?
I can call her, and she can come down, or I can explain it for you.
Let's have her come down.
Would you like Ms. Point Dexter here?
Mr. President, when Ms. Point Dexter comes down, I would just simply like to take that item out of order.
Okay, we only have a handful of items called special, so we may be there naturally anyway. Members, item 22 is before us. We have two committed reports with differing recommendations. Madam Clerk, do the recommendations conflict with one another, or can we adopt both reports?
They do differ, and the Arts, Health, and Humanities Report submits the Department of Aging's recommendations without recommendations, so a motion is required on that one.
Members, to have a motion on item 22? Mr. Weiss is chair of the Arts, Health, Humanities Committee. Did you wish to make a motion on item 22? Mr. Ridley Thomas from ITGS, Mr. Pacheco from Budget and Finance.
Mr. President, you make reference to Mr. Weiss, Mr. Pacheco, and Mr. Ridley Thomas. Is that an attempt to call forth three tenors, or do you really want a triple report?
All I need is a motion on item 22.
You might want to hold it on the desk so that we can confer as to which one we're going to report.
Will the three tenors please huddle and be prepared with a motion quickly? Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 25 was called special by Councilmember Burnson, and I believe a motion is in the process of being distributed.
Mr. Burnson, item 25?
Members of the council, this is an amendment from the Transportation Committee report. The Rules, Election, and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, a resolution relative to the structure of the LA Pasadena Metro Blue Line Construction Authority, and the possible Phase Two of the Pasadena Gold Line Light Rail Project be amended to include the Los Angeles County Metropolitan Transportation Authority as one of the sole recipients of federal or state funding for the potential Phase Two construction. And that's seconded by Mr. Reyes, and I would ask for approval as amended.
Have an amending motion. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. Some of you might have received phone calls from various cities in the San Gabriel Valley area. My motivation for item number 25 is to ensure the city vallet is represented in both Phase One and Phase Two. Let's understand that when Phase One was put together by the authority, we were very accommodating. We had the San Gabriel Valley cog at the table. Then Councilman Hernandez, who was the chair of the authority, made sure that the city vallet's interests were not compromised. And as such, we were able to get the number of stations, the mitigation, and all the benefits that come with a rail line that is deserving for the communities of the city of Los Angeles. Now Phase Two is going to establish itself, and we still should be at the table. There are many issues, there are many issues that need to be resolved, and we will be impacted. And there's no reason why we should not be at the table. So this resolution essentially is to reaffirm and reestablish our commitment for equality line in Phase One and Phase Two. I would hope the San Gabriel Valley cog would show the same courtesy, but beyond courtesy, it is only appropriate that city vallet maintain its stature, maintain its role in Phase Two to ensure quality programs, quality development that will affect the whole corridor and not just one group of cities over the other. So with that, I encourage your support. Councilman Hernandez, if you felt comfortable, would you like to come to the table and hold my time, please, and just give some, at the mic, and give some background?
Yeah, members of council, again, I'm speaking not only as a previous president of the authority, but also a previous councilmember representing the interest in the city of Los Angeles and a constituent who the line would drive by. This line, again, has basically 12 stations, six of them primarily in the city of Los Angeles. When the expansion happens, it will go from the Sierra Madre Station, if it happens, on the eastern tip of Pasadena, all the way past Claremont. Now, what's important is that that line would serve Angelenos going from Los Angeles to Claremont and people coming from the San Gabriel Valley to Los Angeles. And I think that the role of Los Angeles in helping to secure federal funds is important. I think that the relationship between the San Gabriel Valley and the city of Los Angeles will be bridged because of this line. And there's no question that the present structure of the authority has worked. Everybody's giving it alkalis, and it shouldn't change. And so I wholeheartedly support the resolution introduced by Councilman Reyes and passed by the Transportation Committee. I think there's some uneasiness on the San Gabriel Valley's part, just like there was uneasiness on Los Angeles's part at the beginning when they were part of the authority. But again, I think this is a good resolution, and I ask for unanimous support.
Thank you, Council President. Again, in the quest of maintaining a high-quality development, I encourage an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Burnson for a second time.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing. The question of whether the Phase Two will ever be built is problematic because the ridership beyond Sierra Madre, which is the current plan, is so sparse that it would be difficult to justify funding to extend this to Claremont. However, should it happen in the future, we need to have language that protects the city. And I commend Mr. Reyes for his work on that commission and also for bringing this to our attention. And I ask for an eye vote on this.
Thank you, Mr. Burnson. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none? Mr. Labange.
Just a quick question. What's going to happen at the Zab Madre, the Chinatown stop?
Can you read that question again, please?
At the Zab Madre, the aqueduct that's there right next to the Chinatown station? What is planned for that piece of covered-up history right there, right now?
Right now, we have a very interesting proposal.
It's in the authority's area, Hal.
We have a real interesting proposal. We can perhaps provide a snapshot of a historical monument, the Zab Madre, working with private folks that own a piece of it. We're trying to make sure that we can highlight that.
And the authority will protect that?
It has to.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on Mr. Burnson's amending motion. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That amending motion is approved. Let us now open the roll on item number 25 as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Shall we send this matter forthwith? Forthwith on item 25. Returning now to item 22, I believe that three tenors have reached a conclusion.
Yes, Mr. President, this will be as close to a cappella as we can arrange. Item A is that which we move forward pursuant to the CIO's recommendations.
Mr. Ridley Thomas moves, item number 22A.
Yes.
I understand that's a solo.
That's it. Don't tempt me.
Seeing no other members wishing to sing at this point, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 22A. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. The other reports on that file are received and filed. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, I believe the city attorney is here on item number 44. Do you wish to take that item up now?
Members, is there any objection to taking item 44 out of order? Seeing none, Chair recognizes Mr. Pacheco.
Colleagues, item number 44 deals with the issue of neighbor councils and applications being approved, not approved, and the whole handling of them. I just want to share with you that I received a letter from one applicant group, and under Section Nine, Article Four of the Citywide Master Plan, it says that if an application's denied, they can appeal to the full council. Now, I don't know what the procedures are for appealing, so when I received the letter, I simply put a cover letter on it and forwarded it to the council president, because I'm not sure if we've actually established a system here for, you know, basically receiving appeal applications, or do we have forms or anything? We haven't gotten there. As you know, we're all learning and stumbling our way through this whole process. So I simply forwarded it to the city, the council president, which put it on the agenda in a safety net viewpoint. From the standpoint that, under the rules, if you're going to submit an application, you have to do it within five council days, five council meeting days. And the rule is only implicated or triggered or invoked, whatever word you want to use, if an application is denied. Here, we had a situation where it was unclear, and the applicants of the Greater Cypress Park Neighbor Council in formation forwarded me their letter, believing that it may have been triggered. But I understand that the city attorney will clarify the issue for us, and from the clarification, we will know what the next step is. At this point, I would just simply highlight that this is purely a procedural question. It does not deal with the merits of any...
It does not deal with the merits of any position on any issue in terms of boundaries. This is simply a request to clarify the process at this juncture. So if you can hold my time, Mr. President, I believe the city attorney that advises the Neighborhood Council Commission and Department of Neighborhood Empowerment is with us.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. Good morning. Gwendolyn Poindexter, Assistant City Attorney of the Neighborhood Council Advice Division. Yes, I'm aware of this circumstance. I was actually staffing the commission during the commission hearing. As background, the commission heard the application of the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council, which is now a certified neighborhood council comprising several communities in the Arroyo Seco neighborhood, including the Cypress Park community. It is true that the Cypress Park community did separately apply for certification as a separate community. That application is still pending and is tentatively scheduled for December 17th hearing before the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners. The procedural issue is that the plan and the ordinance quite clearly provides that an appeal to the city council only applies when there's been a denial of a certification application. Basically, the provision in the ordinance provides that if the commission approves the application, which is what happened with the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council, the proposed neighborhood council shall be recognized and certified as a neighborhood council. If the commission disapproves the application, the applicants, which is a distinction that the council should consider, the applicants may appeal to the city council within the time which is set forth in the plan. So in this case, the application was approved. Therefore, there's no jurisdiction for the commission to take an appeal for that matter at this time.
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President and colleagues, because the application from the Greater Cypress Park is calendared for December, I guess in layman's terms, if, and we don't know what's going to happen in December, if the Board of Commissioners were to deny the application then, then their rights to appeal would be under Article Nine, Section Four at that point.
That is correct.
Okay. Colleagues, I just wanted you to know that since this is all new to us, with the ambiguity in terms of exactly what occurred on October 2nd, the Greater Cypress Park applicants simply wanted to preserve their rights to an appeal. And that's what I did by forwarding their letter to the council president. This, on the record, determination, I think, preserves their right to appeal if they choose to exercise those on December 17th. My understanding is, from the applicants of that neighborhood council, is that if a denial is determined in December, there will be an appeal. So I would just simply ask you that you look forward on your calendars and look forward to this issue percolating to us as the council. So at this point, Ms. City Attorney for the council, I guess the appropriate thing is to just receive and file the entire matter since the appellate rights have not been in any way affected until December.
That's right. And once this item should be received and filed in December, if it's disapproved, then the community, Neighborhood Council could appeal it, and it would then come to council sometime thereafter. And I just might add, just so the community knows, council's in recess December 20th, so it would probably be sometime at the beginning of the year, early January, if that occurs.
Okay. So you recommend a course of action. Mr. Pacheco is to receive and file this item?
Yes, I would move to receive and file this item. And simply, as a heads up to you colleagues, I would simply point out that, working on this with the city clerk, we were a little bit under pressure because of how the ordinance was written, that it had to be agendized the next council meeting. So I just want you to know that the city clerk and I and the council president's office were looking at that ordinance. And maybe we need to put a little more breathing room in that ordinance because it just sort of compresses everything so rapidly that it may put things way ahead of what we need to get done here, without denying anyone their appeal rights, but just a matter of timely and how timely we handle these matters. So I just want to give you a heads up on that, so you know that that should also be reviewed. But at this point, Mr. President, I would just simply move to receive and file item 44. The Cypress Park applicants know that their hearing date's coming up. And at that point, it'll play itself out however it plays itself out.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Pacheco. Before recognizing Mr. Reyes, let me just read into the record the names of individuals who submitted speaker cards as a help has been clarified for all of you. We will not be acting on any items today. The hearing process, the appeal process, is still at the commission level. But we thank you for coming down, and I want to, again, read the names into the record. Sam Carlos Torres, Mike Hernandez, Carol Jacques, Jim Thompson, Joe Reiser, Ann Walnam, is it Alexia Teron from the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council, Jim McQuiston, and Marcos Gutierrez. Thank you for joining us. Your cards will be part of the file. The chair now recognizes Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. City Attorney, I want to thank you for clarifying this. I do know there's a lot of pressure in our communities to see how we can best get involved. So there's a lot, I like to keep calling creative tension. There's people trying to make sure to do the best for the communities. But Council President, would it be possible, I've got two minutes, two minutes and a half, could I ask one person from the group to speak on my time, since they did make the trip here? Can you hold it and just allow one person from the group to speak? That way, at least you make your trip, or would you rather just wait till the next time? Just one person. Use my time? Please.
Good morning. My name is Carol Hockes Nah Jacques. And I am a member of the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council. And one of the problems, as you're all aware, there's a lot of problems that are going on with the Arroyo Seco Neighborhood Council. Well, not Arroyo Seco, with Neighborhood Councils in general, there are problems out there. And like the city council, sometimes we all agree. Sometimes just some of us agree. Sometimes none of us agree. But ultimately, we all have to work together. What's happened in this particular configuration is that we're bedroom communities, and we don't have a lot of, like, business districts attached to us. So we decided to come together, and wonderful things have really happened. The problem, though, is that, and with all due respect, Dunn has done a great job. But Mr. Greg Nelson gave his opinion that he personally thought that smaller Neighborhood Councils were better. We had been working on our Neighborhood Council for two years. Ultimately, as a result of his statement, Cypress Park decided they wanted their own. Mount Washington decided they wanted their own. Herman was considering having their own Neighborhood Council. And in their wisdom, the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners saw that there is a room for exceptions, but truly, they need to be exceptions. For example, you know, I think it was Allegiant Valley that only had one entrance and egress, you know? Not every little community that wanted a little fence around them could have this. They wanted a kind of general consensus of 20,000. And with these communities coming together, that's what we have. So I would ask you, and I know that there's a lot of legalese involved here, to really consider the beauty and synergy that has happened as a result of six communities coming together and working well. And yes, not everyone agrees, but the majority of us do, and this is America. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Councilman. I just want to thank you for allowing the community folks. They didn't make a trip here. It is a little troublesome to get into parking and get to this point. So I just want to thank you for your time and look forward to a healthy community for everyone. Thank you.
Let me also read an additional name into the record, a card that's been submitted recently. Noemi Garcia, thank you for being here as well. Your card shall be part of the file. Members, we have a motion to receive and file this item. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That matter is received and filed. Next item, please.
Item number 33 was called special, and as much as there are cards from the public.
Yes, council calls for Mr. Jim McQuiston on item 33.
Jim McQuiston, East Hollywood Community Association. I want to congratulate ITE for its initiative in getting up the donation of these computers for Neighborhood Councils. This will be a big benefit because these computers already were part of the city, and they don't have to be reprogrammed as much to put into the city system. I think this is a very generous offer, and it will be an extremely helpful offer to the Neighborhood Councils. And I appreciate the council for moving ahead on this.
Thank you. This closes public comment on item 33. Members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 33. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 40 called special, also for a card from the public.
Council calls for Jim McQuiston on item number 40.
Racing through the agenda, one of the problems that we have in our neighborhood is a trash dumping place that has been kind of de facto organized. The city says, and I agree, that if we just keep cleaning up that same place, people will think that that's a place to dump trash. And we'll never get it cleaned up because one day, or maybe for a few hours, it'll be clean. And then the rest of the time, it'll be dirty. And this idea of putting up a camera and catching people dumping this, if we can just catch one person dumping this, it will send a strong message to the neighborhood not to dump in that position. And that's exactly what we need. These cameras are not that expensive. We don't have to have it there all the time, so no one will know when it's there and when it isn't there. And that way, I think that's the key to getting this place cleaned up. And I want to congratulate Councilmember Glanter for putting in this motion and all of you for supporting this. I think it's a terrific idea.
Thank you. This closes the public comment on item number 40. Turning now to council discussion. Ms. Glanter.
Thank you. First, I want to offer a minor amendment here. I finally figured out what we did, where we meant to scribble down B.O.S. We somehow got interpreted to B and S. So I want to amend the motion. In the "I therefore move" paragraph, it should say "I therefore move" that the Bureau of Sanitation, not the Building and Safety Department. And then in the "further move" paragraph, again, it should say, instead of Building and Safety, it should say Bureau of Sanitation and City Attorney. We've been advised by the City Attorney's Neighborhood Prosecutor Program that these cameras, where they exist, actually are very helpful in identifying the people who are doing this. And often, it's the same people over and over again, particularly people who are doing some construction and don't want to be bothered disposing of construction debris. I picked a few nails out of my tires at home from such a thing the other day. But in Council District Six, there are now a number of locations that have been very popular and which are under camera surveillance. And the Neighborhood Prosecutors have been able to actually apprehend people. So I think that this is an idea worth exploring for expansion, and I appreciate Mr. McQuiston's endorsement. And I hope you will join me in supporting the motion as amended.
Ms. Gruehl?
I want to similarly stand up and compliment Councilwoman Glanter on this issue because it is one that is extensive. I was in North Hollywood last night at a Neighborhood Council meeting where people talked about the fact that they saw so many of these illegal dumpings happening, and there was nothing that they could do. And they called LAPD, and LAPD said, "There isn't anything we can do." And I think as we move ahead on this report, to look at ways in which we can inform LAPD as well, if there are other avenues. But I have another problem area on Latuna Canyon, which is very desolate but is a great place for people who dump their belongings and so forth. And we have been trying to enforce the no illegal dumping as well in that area. So I think this is a great program. My community last night suggested that we use fake cameras in some areas just as a deterrent. And I said, "We want real cameras." But they knew those were costly on each of them. But I think it will be, not only will it catch people, but it will be a deterrent for individuals who will think twice about doing this when they see those cameras at the corner. So I just wanted to stand up in support of this motion, and Councilwoman Glanter's leadership on this because it really is a critical issue in parts of my district as well. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Councilmember Glanter, for this. I think this is going to be a wonderful addition to our quiver here. There are, I think, right now, three other initiatives in the city for bulky item pickup right now that we've managed to launch. One, drop-off yards where community groups can, or individuals can bring by bulky items. Two is the Bureau of Street Services roving patrols, which are in every one of your districts. It was something that I was passionate about, and I got in this year's budget. But in all 15 districts, we have at least a day a week where they just rove. They don't take any phone calls, and they look for bulky item pickups. And then we also have, third, the Bureau of Sanitation's very focused moves over the last two months to pick up, at least in my district, for example, and I'm sure it's in yours as well, literally hundreds of tons of bulky item pickups. This requires this sort of vigilance. But I think that when you see this four-pronged approach and you throw the Neighborhood Prosecutors in there, these are five initiatives just in the last year to get those bulky items off the streets. But for those folks who are listening or who watch this, the most important number is 311. Call it and call in those bulky item pickups because we can't do it without your help. Thanks.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. I just wanted to ask, make on the motion, Ms. Glanter, thank you. If you could, instead of saying sanitation, sanitation takes organized bulky item. Street services gets anything that people dump in the street. And sometimes it's a street services, street use problem. If you just say Public Works, that broadens it a little. And also, I would suggest that we have 138 cameras right now through our Department of Transportation system. And I would like their expertise in doing this, so we don't have to. We could probably be more efficient if we asked the Department of Transportation to comment because they have the largest network of cameras that should go right down to City Hall East right now. And further, there's a location in my district on Duran, at the edge of the city, right next to Glendale, where people come from all over to dump in there. And we're working with Caltrans to try to solve a similar problem. But I would just say, Public Works would give you more of a broader catch with both sanitation and street services. And also DOT has 138 cameras and technology working. We don't need to duplicate that. Maybe they could add to it.
Thank you. The reason I did not put all of Public Works is that I want to get this done sometime during my tenure in office. So I appreciate the suggestion, and I think you're right that those other, that Bureau of Street Services and DOT may have information to contribute. And I certainly think we should ask them to contribute information. But I don't want to get this caught up in trying to schedule meetings among a whole bunch of different departments. What I will simply do is ask the Bureau of Sanitation to make sure they've checked with everybody else. But somebody's got to have the lead responsibility for this, or it'll never actually get back to us.
But what will happen is, sanitation has a one-person bulky item truck now. They're not two people. And so usually what happens, people dump a load off a truck there. So they need...
I'm familiar with the problem.
I understand that. But Street Services usually has the tools, whether it's a tractor. And I would just say, if you say Public Works...
No, but Tom, look, my issue here is separate from getting the stuff picked up. You're exactly right about getting it picked up. What I'm trying to do here is specifically focus on finding the people who are causing the problem. The problem with the DOT intersection cameras is they're focused on the traffic out in the street. And these guys mostly do their dumping either when it's dark, so the camera's not working so well, or they do it in alleys where we don't have the cameras. So our goal here is to try to keep it simple enough to get started. Bureau of Sanitation, I'm sure, is going to tell me, just as you did, "We don't have enough manpower to go get all the stuff." That's not what this motion is about. This motion is specifically about identifying where the problem is, where we might be able to actually see somebody doing it. And then we send the Neighborhood Prosecutors after them. And then we send the neighborhood prosecutors after them. The Neighborhood Prosecutor Program has been very successful, as I know you know. These are really gung-ho attorneys out there and they'll go after people doing this stuff with relish. And so I think what we want to do is get this back in front of a committee as quickly as possible. Perhaps what we should do is, we've asked, the motion asks the City Attorney, oh, we have to take out the CAO there, I'm sorry, that we change CAO and Building and Safety to City Attorney and Bureau of Sanitation. And let's add to that that we ask the Bureau of Sanitation to consult with DOT and Bureau of Street Services.
Great, thank you.
Okay? But I still want sanitation and the City Attorney to be the ones who are responsible for reporting back to us.
Okay. Motion is hereby amended. Chair recognizes Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. I too rise in support of this. I have firsthand experience in my district of surveillance cameras, not only being able to help apprehend these dumpers, but to actually deter it. And I had a chronic illegal dumping site in Watts and in Wilmington and the placement of these cameras really made a huge difference. I'm hoping that, I know there's sort of two levels of these cameras. One is just a surveillance camera. The others that I have in my district are the talking cameras, which actually have a very loud voice that's been recorded by one of our police officers and basically says, "Stop. You're being watched by LAPD. Dumping is illegal and you can be prosecuted," which really scares the living daylights out of people when they hear that. So, and I know they're a little bit more expensive, but I would hope that we could look at both kinds of cameras because they are really effective. And I think what this does to Councilwoman Glanter is it really says, "We are doing something." And for too long, we have really been telling people there was nothing we could do and it was an issue in people's neighborhoods that among, probably above almost every other thing, led to people really feeling embarrassed about their neighborhoods and feeling like their quality of life in and around these areas was just next to nothing. So I love it that we're doing something proactive. I think the talking cameras are actually the best of both worlds and so I support this. And I know this isn't part of your effort, Councilwoman Glanter, but I do think we do need to help people understand what to do with the things that they don't want anymore, what to do with their couches, what to do with their mattresses, what to do with their chairs, what to do with all these things. And I love what Public Works has done in Nick Pacheco's district by having a great drive-through place where people can actually dump their unwanted furniture and also get paid for it. So I think the more of those that we have throughout the city, the more we'll be able to attack this problem on both ends. So I support this.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Chair recognizes Mr. Burnson.
Well, I think it's a very good idea, but the key is, what are we going to do about it once we find out who they are? And if we don't prosecute them in a manner that gets everybody's attention, it's going to continue. And I'm not going to go so far as to suggest what they do in the Middle East, chopping off a hand. It stops it, though. I'll tell you, it would stop graffiti also, you do a couple of those. I'm not going to go that far. This is America. But seriously speaking, I commend Ms. Glanter for innovating this and I think if we can get some punishment, fitting punishment, such as maybe people who are apprehended be forced to clean up the streets publicly in the daytime and identified as people who are dumping, I think this might have a clue as to at least slow it down, if not stop it. So I would urge an eye vote on this and I, again, thanks a lot, Ruth.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, each one of us has areas where this is happening and I need to pull this demographic out over and over again, but I think it talks about how we need to be more creative in dealing with this dumping. I do have area, cut the arm off, sorry, Hal, but bottom line is, in some areas, we have one hundred and forty-seven persons per acre. That's the reality of it. In other places, we have anywhere between six to twelve persons per acre. In some areas, there are much more ranchers than there are homeowners and people are always moving. So things get dumped out into the street. Another issue here is we have contractors that come from outside the city, other parts of the city. They drive through, they want to save money, so instead of taking what they've picked up in their work as contractor in cleaning yards and shutting down old houses or whatever they're doing, to make a profit, they dump on the streets. And these are people that are very unscrupulous. They don't care about community welfare or community pride. They don't live in the neighborhood, so they drive by our communities and they dump whole stacks. I literally have half streets filled with junk and it's not coming from the next-door neighbor. It's coming from people that are dumping their trash as they are trying to get through the community. Now, in certain parts of our city, more contractors drive through than others. So guess who gets the burden? So I'm very much in support of this motion. I'm glad it's coming to plumb because we start identifying the hotspots. Public Works has done a great job of picking up many of this dumping that's going on. I know there have been instances where we're picking up two tons a day in my district, two tons. In certain neighborhoods, when we are concentrating communities, on a weekend, we pick up thirty-five tons. So this is an incredible problem. We need to start arresting the bad guys and make people accountable for their illegal actions and we need to record who they are. So I thank you for your support.
Mr. Zine.
Well, it's time for the posse roundup because this weekend in the West San Fernando Valley, we're going to have the posse roundup and seek the violators and pursue them with our Neighborhood Prosecutor and do the cleanup campaign. And Councilmember Glanter has seen in her new adventures to the San Fernando Valley how much of this decay's taken place and obviously it's getting worse. With the assistance of the LAPD, with their new administration, with the Neighborhood Prosecutor, with the community groups, neighborhood councils, everyone to come together, it's a great investment in that whole issue that people keep talking about. They want to improve the quality of life in Los Angeles. And whether it be Eric Garcetti on Hollywood Boulevard or Ruth Glanter in the San Fernando Valley or Janice Hahn down in Wilmington, San Pedro, Mark Ridley in his district, it affects the whole city of Los Angeles. So this is another opportunity for us to invest in a quality of life. We do have a Neighborhood Prosecutor Program working very successful in taking these individuals to trial and doing what they need to do along with the other city departments. So I support this. It's a wonderful opportunity. And when those individuals go to court after they're on videotape, it's difficult for them to refute the charges since it's already documented, well documented. We use the photo red light, seems to be very successful. This is just one of the new areas of technology that we can incorporate to improve the quality of lives of those in our beautiful city of Los Angeles, including Wendy Gruel's district, the San Fernando Valley.
Ms. Glanter. For a second time? Mr. Labange for a second time.
A question. Do we know how much we now raise from fines from prosecuting people in illegal dumping? Does the City Attorney know?
I'm City Attorney, CAO.
Does the City Attorney know?
I don't know. I'm sure our office has some issue, some knowledge of it, but it's a different section and I haven't been given that information.
Yeah. Well, no, I know, but do we know what, how much we, could you find out for me and just share that with me and my colleagues on what it is that we get?
Be happy to.
On the finding? Because I know, I think that Mr. Doug Adio also, from some of the fines, goes to pay for some of these instruments of technology in the fine program and Neighborhood Prosecutors that he runs. So if you could.
Sure.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Ms. Zine.
Just quickly, one of the issues in the fines is oftentimes the individual is apprehended instead of paying a fine, does community service. So when, again, when you look at that, if you can find out how many of them are given community service instead of paying the fine, because oftentimes the courts will grant community service in lieu of the fine, obviously we need the money.
Sometimes they do both.
Make them go clean up the, assigned probation and that's your alley and you're assigned to that for the next century.
Sometimes they'll do both, though. They'll do the fine and community service rather than jail time.
Well, the judge can impose restrictions and maybe we need to work with the judges on that, too, because obviously it's a matter that is affecting all areas of the city, including the 12th district.
Have them clean up the alleys with their, with the hand they have remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Zine. Seeing no other members wishing to be heard on this item, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item forty as amended. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, not on the agenda, special one, motion presented by Councilmember Pacheco. The City Attorney will explain the need to make the findings.
Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This has to do with the Broadway Sidewalk Reconstruction Project under the CRA and MTA's call for projects. When they opened up the sidewalk, they found out there was more that they had to do and in order to do that and meet their November fifteenth deadline imposed by city ordinance which precludes construction during the holiday season, they need to work on a twenty-four-hour basis and this would, they just found that out, and this would relieve them of the ordinance, the ordinance which doesn't allow twenty-four hours. So the council would need to make the findings that the need to act arose after the posting of the agenda and there's an immediate need to act.
Members wishing to be heard on the findings? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Special one now before us. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I would just simply say that our goal is to preserve the holiday period as a, the least amount of inconvenience that Public Works provides our residents. So that's the goal of this motion, is to protect that. The only way to do that, to protect that period, is by accelerating work before the November fifteenth deadline. So I would simply ask for your support on the motion.
Members wishing to be heard on special one? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Council calls forward Betty Cooper. While she comes forward, Mr. Rudy Thomas. Ms. Cooper, go ahead.
Thank you for giving me a chance to speak. I want to also thank Councilwoman Alex Padilla for Glen Oaks Boulevard media looking so beautiful. Thank you again. But I have a comment today regarding a phone call I received yesterday from John Lugo, who's the street maintenance. He told me that we sent in a petition regarding, we wanted street signs for parking so we can have our streets swept. I've been in my neighborhood forty-six years and I've been sweeping my own street gutters for forty-six years. I can't understand why we're so neglected when other streets have street signs so that people know what day is they can park through the week so they can have their streets swept. So this is what I meant. So John Lugo told us, he said, "We are living in an open area." I don't understand what he means by that. He says, "So we could not have street signs. They could only come and sweep our streets once a month." That's ridiculous. And so that's why I wanted to come to you, to talk to you, to find out, why are we neglected? And I'm representing the Pacoima Community Neighborhood Watch. Please try to help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Thank you for being here and as you know, we'll look into it and get back to you in short order. Our next speaker under public comment is Terri Speth.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the city council. My name is Terri Speth. I'm employed by the City Planning Department, but I'm here speaking on my own time and this is a kind of a different experience for me. I've never spoken on this part of the agenda. I'm usually here before you for the last twenty-five years on items that are on the agenda. I'd just like your indulgence for a few minutes to make some observations on history and geography in the city of LA. I'm proud to be a third-generation Angelino. My paternal grandmother was born in eighteen ninety-three in what is now CD fourteen. My father was a war baby. He was born during World War I in what is now the Great Ninth. I'm a war baby, too, having been born, taken my first breath in what is now CD I during World War II. I've lived most of my life as a resident in the city of Los Angeles, residing in CD, what is now CD IV, VIII, XI, and XIII. The last sixteen years, I've lived and voted in CD X. Sorry, Mr. Holden isn't here today. I've worked for the city for the past twenty-eight years and fifteen months ago, I returned to this magnificently restored building that my father-in-law helped to build seventy-five years ago. Sadly, however, when I moved back here, I was one of eight thousand white-collar and professional city employees whose contracts had expired two weeks before. And I regret to say that I don't have one now. As a governor of the Engineers and Architects Association, I have now participated in approximately forty bargaining sessions, one trip to the Executive Employee Relations Committee, one mediation session, and walked two picket lines. My fourth-generation LA kids are now both in college and I know that I would be helped immensely if I could have, receive a cost of living adjustment, which would be the first one I've had, in two years, almost. I'm just one of eight thousand employees, many of whom are also citizens of the city of Los Angeles, who work here and who don't have contracts. And I urge this body to use its influence to make the progress move. We're very tired and we, of this endless process and I beg you, I beg you to use your influence where it will do the most good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your indulgence.
This concludes public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mr. President, do you wish to clear the desk before going into closed session?
Let's see, housekeeping. Mr. Rudy Thomas.
Just a point of information and a personal privilege. Mr. President, you may recall the council did act just a few weeks ago on the matter of predatory lending. May I direct your attention to the business section of the LA Times that is on Saturday, October twelve, where it makes the point that one of those entities, Household International, has now settled at four hundred and eighty-four million dollars because of its practices of predatory lending, eighty-seven million of which is in the state of California. I call that to the attention of the body and to the public simply because this practice still goes on. This is in addition to the Citicorp, a multimillion-dollar settlement. It's huge and it seems to us that we need to be on guard for our seniors in particular, who are still the victims of predatory lending practices. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rudy Thomas, and we appreciate your leadership on that issue. Madam Clerk.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, October twenty-ninth, City Business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Garcetti is excused.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be, requests to be excused November nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-second, and twenty-sixth for City Business. That also meets council policy.
Ms. Hahn is excused.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused November nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-second, and twenty-sixth for City Business. A motion is required.
Is there a motion? Mr. Weiss moves. Those excuses are approved.
That clears the desk for closed session.
Thank you very much. In conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Guards, please clear the chambers.
Madam Clerk.
Item forty-three A is settlement in the case of D and M Construction versus City of Los Angeles and that's in the amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. The matter is now before us. Please open the roll. I'll close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, two noes.
Next item, please.
Item forty-three B is settlement in the case of D and M Construction versus City of Los Angeles and that's in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars.
Members, the matter is before you. Please open the roll. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Now, tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes, three noes.
All right. Please proceed. Next item, please.
Last item is item 43C, and that's settlement for workers' compensation claim in the amount of $126,040, and that's payable at $230 per week.
Thank you very much. Members, the matter is now before us. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Thank you very much. Those items are now approved. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
That clears the desk, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. In view of the fact we took care of the other customary procedures, we will now stand for announcements and adjourning motions. Members, anyone wishing to be heard by way of adjourning motion? Mr. Burnson.
Yes, I have two for the same family, unfortunately. One of them passed away in last January, but was just brought to our attention, and that was Irene Stewart-Lavec. And Lucian Henry-Lavec passed away on October 6. They are, they are the parents of activists in my district, Dave and Becky Lavec, who have been extremely active in Neighborhood Watch and other supportive neighborhood functions. They're supported, they're survived by seven children and three siblings, and I would ask that we adjourn in their, in their memory.
Right, thank you. Other members? Ms. Glanter.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the council to join me in adjourning in memory of Tony Mizaki. Some of you may have read the very long obituary that appeared in the LA Times. Tony was a very interesting guy because he, I met him first in the 1960s when he was working very hard to help people in the labor movement understand what kinds of health issues they were up against, not just safety issues, but health issues. And if I remember correctly, he was one of the people who helped goad the toll-takers on the bridges and tunnels in New York City into organizing what was the first health and safety strike that I know of, because, of course, there they are sitting in lanes of traffic, breathing god knows what all day long, and they had to ask for some changes in their medical benefits. Tony worked for the Oil Chemical and Atomic Workers Union for many, many years and was widely credited with precipitating and causing to be the Occupational Safety and Health Act, which we all take for granted these days, but was passed in about 1970. And I met him when he was, when I was still living in New York, and he was looking for a doctor to talk to his union guys, the Oil Chemical and Atomic Workers, about what they were probably breathing. And I'm very proud to have been the one who told him to call Sid Wolf at the Health Research Group that Ralph Nader had set up. But it served me right. When I moved to California a year or two later, he called me again, and he said, "All right, I need one in Los Angeles." He said, "Tony, I just got here." And he said, "That's okay. You have to find me one." And he was the kind of persuasive guy that I knew he was right, and I would have to find him one. And actually, I found him a guy who was then, I don't know, some of you are too young to remember this, but in, in the early 70s, there were still all these left-wing factions, the Progressive Labor Party, and this, this, that, and the other. So, I actually decided the way to get a doctor is to call one who's involved in the Progressive Labor Party, which says it's committed to helping workers, and I found one who told me later, he changed his whole career after meeting Tony Mizaki, that Tony was the kind of person who was so persuasive that doctors who met him once and went to talk to a group of workers once or twice would change their whole lives as a result. He went on to run for union president and was regarded by the other faction in the union as way too radical, and he did not succeed in becoming the union president, but continued to work on health and safety issues for the rest of his life. And I was very sad to learn that he passed away just about a week ago.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I am adjourning, I would, I'm asking that we adjourn today in the memory of Russell A. Isor, and this was actually brought to me by our city attorney, Gail Weingart. He is actually a friend of their family, but he was a longtime resident of San Pedro, which is why she asked if I would bring this to our attention. He was born in 1923 and died on October 12 after, unfortunately, having a struggle with pancreatic cancer. His will to fight was an inspiration to all who spent his last days with him. He leaves behind his loving wife, Laura Coolman, daughters Lori, Kristen, and Carol Anne, granddaughter Caitlin, and in-laws, Ed and Catherine Coolman. He was preceded in death by his son, Michael. He was a legend in the Southern California sport fishing industry. He was owner-skipper of seven sport fishing boats. He was the creator of the Isor Line and father to Spectra Fishing Line and instrumental in creating and facilitating many environmental causes. He also leaves behind scores of friends, colleagues, and anglers to whom he gave tirelessly of his knowledge. Tight lines. His business was at Pier 22, and that, I believe, is where they will have a gathering and celebration of his life.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange.
Mr. President, members of council, Ray Coniff, who lived to be 85, was a great composer, famous song, "Somewhere, My Love," passed away after illness. He is known for all his work and has done a wonderful job as a composer. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in his memory, and also Al Loman, who was part of Loman &amp; Barclay. He died at 69-years-old. His wife, Mary Ann, of 44-years, and was someone I listened to as a kid. I remember Loman &amp; Barclay on the radio and quite a bit of fun and for that drive time and part of that duo. And also, in my family, my brother's wife, Carla Faber-Labange, succumbed at 58-years-old to cancer, and she was an inspiration to all of us because she had the family. She was in the party and always was very nice and inspiring to all the family members, but she fought a tough battle for 11 months, and she's with her maker. So, I ask we adjourn in her memory as well. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Janina Williams. Ms. Williams lived all her adult life overlooking Dodger Stadium. She saw it built and the changes it brought to the neighborhood. She fought for the protection of Elysian Park, was very active with the Citizens Committee to Save Elysian Parks inception from 1965, and the group defeated the proposal to construct the convention center in Elysian Park. Over the years, the Citizens to Save Elysian Park Committee prevented airports, helicopter training, expansion of police academy, freeways, and restaurants from taking Park land. Janina was a major player in all these fights. She'll be sorely missed. She was survived by Art Williams, Bob Williams, and her brother, and several grandchildren. I'd like to also...
I'd like to add to that, too. I've knew her and worked with her over the years on issues. At one time, the 4th district went in through Elysian Park years ago when I first started with John, and I know Eric wanted to say something.
Thank you. I'd like to adjourn also in memory of Hilda Amorax. She's the mother of Sally Nakahiro, retired homemaker who remained active in her community as a team mom for various sports at the recreation centers. Her home was always frequented by the children of the neighborhood, where they always found her welcoming arms and her delicious treats. She's survived by four children, Luis, Vivi, Jorge, and Sally.
Thank you. Ms. Zine.
Mr. President, colleagues, request we adjourn in memory of Betty Danzinger. Betty died of Alzheimer's disease. She was a resident of Sherman Oaks, who was very committed to her community. Betty's daughter-in-law is Carol Danzinger, the director of One Senior Citizen Center in Reseda. Betty was a wonderful grandmother, mother-in-law. She will be greatly missed by her family and friends. She is survived by her son, Max, and grandson, Cory. I also like to adjourn in memory of the latest victim of the murder on the East Coast, member of the FBI Intelligence Analyst Corps, who was shot and murdered last night in Fairfax, Virginia, and the other victims of the murder on the East Coast. May they all rest in peace.
Members, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Kevin Spears. Kevin served as one of my special assistants during the time that I served as executive director of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, active in the United Methodist Church, and was a youth advocate at that time, and helped immensely in a variety of ways with the advancement of nonviolence and the philosophy of Martin the King over the duration of my time there. Subsequent to that, he became a strong advocate for cultural affairs and the arts in our city and was a passionate advocate for those who are survivors of HIV/AIDS and related illness. Kevin did die on Sunday, October 13, at the St. Francis Hospital in Lynnwood. His services will be held on Saturday, the 19th, at the Holman United Methodist Church, where his membership was for a very, very long time. He is survived by his mother, Claudia, his father, LB, one sister, one brother, and one niece, and he will be greatly missed by all of us. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, and we are now adjourned.